Mr. Cromarty.
Yes, please bow in the gates for prayer. Almighty God, we come before you this morning. First, just wanting to thank you for waking us up this morning, housing our right minds. We thank you for your mercy as we deal with our individual situations, health problems, and all those things that make up our day. We want to thank you, though, for the good fortune that Americans have an opportunity to be a part of. Thank you for giving us substance and direct us to share that. Thank you for our vocations and pray for our citizens to realize the same. Help us to plan and make good decisions for the good of Wayne County. We pray for the protection of our men in uniform. Give them judgment and patience as they interact with our citizens. Ask our citizens, dear God, to have patience as they interact with our protectors. All these things, in your name, we ask. Amen.
Amen.
Stand, place the flag. Flag is leaving the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Has everybody had the opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Are there any corrections to the minutes? I entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Got a motion on the floor, any discussion? Always the favorite place to raise your right hand. Thank you. Any change to the agenda, Mr. Honeycutt?
That's very sorry.
I think Mr. Gurley did ask you to do something to the end of your comments.
Under county manager, yes, sir.
Other than that, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Got a motion on the floor, any discussion? Always the favorite place to raise your right hand. Thank you. And now to something fun for a change. We're gonna have our, I see our Roto Raptors out there, so you guys will come on up and make your presentation for us.
I just want to say, good morning. I'm Summer Young, the Wayne County 4-H Program Assistant, and I'm glad to have the 4-H Roto Raptors here today, Team 3737. So I'm gonna turn it over to them and let them tell you what they've been got going on.
Thank you for having us today. We are glad to present to you the 2017-2018 Raptor Review.
Team 3737 had an outstanding year competing with Dawn in the first power-up competition, but we did more than just compete. We helped our community by spreading STEM, promoting first, and just being a helping
We started our offseason by teaching summer camps. We Do was a new one for us, and LEGO Design is always a favorite. Using EV3 robots allowed us to teach students programming, logic, and design skills.
The Roto Raptors have been busy in the community spreading STEM. Each year, we teach the Robotics Merit Badge. Over 100 scouts have now received this badge from our workshops.
Other community activities include teaching at 4-H Science Nights in Sampson County, manning a booth at the Optimus Fun Day, manning a booth at the Wayne County 8th Grade Science Fair, speaking at the Extension Showcase, and recently, we have been able to add STEM activities to the Alphabet Soup Club. Then we had nine days at the Wayne Regional Agricultural Fair, two days at the Wings Over Wayne Air Show, and the NC Manufacturing Day in Lenore County.
Team 3737 also demos its robots to local businesses, and some of these include Wade Hall Savage and SPX.
As a first team, we are eager to see our first-legged teams succeed. We currently have two teams in the county, RoboRecruits and Tangy Toads. Both of these teams made it to the state level. We are also involved with First Legged League Junior for grades K through 4. We have attended expos and have helped young people with their projects.
More community service includes making soup for the soup kitchen, placing flags on soldiers' graves on Memorial Day, and caroling at assisted living homes.
This all takes money, and the team has been busy raising funds. Our biggest event last year was the Murder Mercy Evening. This is a great success, raising over $3,000, and everyone had a great time.
So, that brings us to the robots. We are a robot club after all. We took our 2017 robot to an offseason competition in South Carolina and won the event. We also participated in the North Carolina Offseason Event and took home the second-place
After the busy offseason, we were ready for the 2018 game reveal. Howa was based on retro video games, and robots were required to pick up yellow milk crates and place them in teeter totters. Extra points were given at the end of the match for climbing.
Our team starts the build by concentrating on strategy. We decided to design a shooter-style robot. The next step of the design stage is, the next step of the design stage in prototyping.
When we have a design, our mechanical students put the robot together. This is followed by electrical. It is amazing what you can do in a small space.
Our programmers use LabVIEW language. Last of all is time for testing. We were also able to use a half-practice field that a team in Greenville had built, and this all happens in six weeks.
This year's robot was named Dawn. This is in honor of a former teammate who was battling cancer. We decided to build a practice robot this year as well. We called it Beast.
Our first competition was in the beginning of March, and we took 30 students to the ECU basketball stadium. Our robot had some issues, but we were chosen to be part of the fifth alliance and played through the semifinals.
At the end of March, we took 25 students to an ice rink in Winston-Salem. We were captains of the sixth alliance and played through the quarterfinals. We were thrilled to receive the Engineering Inspirational Award, which celebrates outstanding success and appreciation for engineering within a team's organization and community. This allowed us to compete with three other teams for this prestigious award and qualified us for the state competition. We also qualified with the robot Dawn.
At the state competition, we quickly rose in ranks as our unique climbing feature enabled us to dual-climb with many robots gaining extra points. As third-alliance captains, we played through the semifinals, a hard-fought battle. We received the imagery award, which celebrates attractiveness in engineering and outstanding visual aesthetic integration of machine and team appearance.
We were one of the 14 teams that advanced to the world championship in Houston, Texas. There were over 400 FRC teams, and 25 countries were represented. We ended up 39th out of 67 on our field. It was amazing, it was an amazing experience for our 19 students who were able to make the trip.
Our summer is just beginning, and we have many plans, including a girls-only offseason competition and hosting the first-ever FLL tournament in Goldsboro in December.
So as you can see, the Roto Raptors build robots, but we do so much more. We help our community and inspire students to get involved in STEM and become the leaders of today. Team 3737 would like to thank the community for all the support that we have, that they have given us now and in the future. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Our company's been involved with the Roto Raptors for quite a few years. Y'all doing an awesome job. If the public wanted to see what our youth is today, because we hear so many negatives today, this is a perfect example of the youth of our country. Our country is not as destitute as we're led to believe. These, 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 these many women, I'm gonna call you many women, have such a dedication to what you do. And the reason I know this, because three, four, five years ago, the robots, you know, were pretty complicated, but this last robot that you, that you guys built, there's so many different moving parts, and it's so fragile. Our company boxed this thing up to ship to Houston, and I'm telling you, we had, we had to handle this thing with kid gloves, because damage is something that you can't have when you get there. And I'm, my understanding was it arrived in good shape, is that correct?
Absolutely, yeah, we appreciate that.
Okay, well, I'm just pointing out the fact that you're getting more and more involved and complicated with the robots that you do. Everybody in this county needs to come and see exactly what you guys do, other than just building a robot. Like you just said, you're all over, you're all over North Carolina. If you wanted to come to my company, which you've been, to do a robot demonstration for employees or whatever it takes, you guys do that. So I just wanna, I just wanna say thank you for what you do. Your leaders are really dedicated. Thank you so much for what you do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just by looking at the picture, it looks like your numbers have kind of grown too. Is that my imagination? That's a good thing. It's a really good thing. I'm proud of what you guys are doing, I really am. Great job.
So if there are no other questions, would it be all right to get a picture?
Matthew, come forward a little. Elizabeth, come forward.
Keep up, keep up, good work.
Yeah, tighten up for sure. Come on, a little more. All right. One, two, three. Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Moving on, we've got public comments scheduled this morning, and we have a public hearing. The public hearing is about our annual budget and capital improvement projects. So if you want to talk about it that way to the public hearing, but for the public comment time, you can talk about anything. In both cases, we'll be allowed four minutes for your comments. You'll give us your name, your address, and your phone number. So it's open for public comment.
My name is Steve Cole. I live at 102 Helms Court, Goldsboro, North Carolina, 27530. Phone number, 919-736-3625. Good morning, commissioners. I know I started attending commissioners' meetings a couple of years ago at least in an attempt to seek your help in getting our roads repaired. Although I realize there's still some additional work to be done, collecting final invoices, going, following through with the final assessment, the construction's all complete, and if you haven't been out there and visited our neighborhood recently, you know, I encourage you to do so, because it's beautiful, roads are beautiful, everybody's happy out there. And it's something, like I said, Witz, it was 10 years we had been seeking a solution to get our roads fixed out there. And this was the only solution that I, I'm aware of that was feasible to make happen, and it couldn't have happened without your guys' help. So I appreciate your support and help making that happen. I'd like to thank Craig and Borden, Carol, George, Chip, everybody else on the county staff that helped make this happen. It was a big project. I don't think any of the residents of our neighborhood or any of the other neighborhoods realize how much work goes into making something like that happen. It's a lot of work, you know, and it's, it just couldn't happen without your guys' help. So thank you very much, and I hope that the, you know, I came also to support the other neighborhoods, particularly our neighboring neighborhood, Lane Tree Village. I was hoping there would be some residents here today to, you know, express support and ask you guys for support, because I really like to see and hope that they can make the same kind of project happen in their neighborhood as well. They've, I hope they, there's a lot of work, and, you know, they need to participate and be a part of this. They, they need to come and talk to you guys about it. But anyway, thank you guys for your help, and we're all real happy out there. Thank you very much.
Good morning. I'm Ann Doruski, 119 Albert Drive, Goldsboro, 919-738-0672. Thank you for representing us and allowing me a few minutes to speak. My name is Ann Doruski, as I've said, and my husband is Len Doruski. He's working now, but he's here with us in spirit. We came to Wayne County 20 years ago with the Air Force. Len retired after 26 years, and we decided to stay, because we liked Wayne County a lot. Our two sons graduated from CBA COC, went on to state, they're state graduates. Len works for, as a training manager for SPX Transformer Solutions for the past 10 years, and I've been working in Kinston for 18 years at the hospital. Our church is here, our friends are here, the base is here, we want to stay here, but we have a serious situation in Wayne County. For 20 years, we've lived in the Reach subdivision, located off Perkins Road in northern Wayne County. Six months ago, a new neighbor moved in three houses down for us and uses his backyard as a shooting range, as a gun range, and to launch things into the farmer's field located behind our house. Everyone is scared, but we've been told it's legal to shoot on your own property, so we just pray things will change. The most recent crisis occurred on Memorial Day, when after a few days away, we returned home about 6:00 PM to find our pool nearly empty. My husband thought it was a broken pipe, but upon further investigation, we saw a hole with water gushing out of the pool, and he immediately recognized it as a damage from a gunshot. We could see where the bullet hit the wooden fence surrounding the pool, proceeded to hit the hose, entered the hose reel, exited, and pierced the side of the pool and the liner. Wayne County detectives are involved. Currently, I don't have an update to give you, but it seems like everyone heard the shots, because they were so alarmingly loud, they came outside, but they couldn't see this shooter, because if you know Albert Drive, it's pretty tree-lined. I want you to visualize the path that bullet would have taken. Most likely left three houses down. It passed a swing set where 10-year-old Mary stands on the swing with her friends, and her girlfriend's laughing and talking. She's too grown up to swing on the swings, but they like to hang on it. It passed where her mother bends over her raised garden bed planting her vegetables. Then it traveled into the next yard, where a neighbor has strung lights in the trees near his fire pit and built a fence for his dog who's outside. The bullet then traveled into my yard, passing a 320-gallon propane tank, eventually hitting the pool. What if it hadn't stopped at our pool? What if it kept going? It would again into our neighbor's yard that has five children. So needless to say, everybody's really upset. At first, we were all kind of shocked, but now we're angry, because it's not about the property damage, which is a pain, because Len has to fix it all and pay for it and refill the pool. It's a fear of living where we've been told it's legal to discharge a weapon in a highly populated residential area. We're afraid to tell our son Chris, who lives in Chapel Hill, because we're afraid he won't bring his two-year-old and four-year-old, our two-year-old and four-year-old grandchildren home, because they're gonna say, "Mom, how can we know, when we're hanging out in your pool and cooking, that he's not gonna go out and shoot his weapon, and this same thing won't happen again?" We have a 4th of July picnic planned for family and friends, and I imagine that this neighbor's gonna treat the 4th of July like a weatherman treats a hurricane. You know how a weatherman gets all excited about a hurricane coming? Think he's probably gonna be excited about the 4th of July when he gets to unload. So we're thinking of canceling the picnic. I am not trying to limit anybody's right to bear arms, but things have gotten out of hand. His rights cannot supersede our neighbors. I have some ordinances from other counties I'd like to share, but we need your help. What are we supposed to do? We're scared. So that's my question, you know? What are we supposed to do? 20 years-
If you have some ordinance that you wish to share with us, if you'll get those to-
I will.
Clerk.
Do you have any other questions for me? Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you.
I'm Barry Merrill, 432 Club Knolls Road, Dudley, 919-922-1499. It's good to see you, Mr. Bell and Mr. Gurley, here today. I know y'all have had some health struggles, and I'm glad to see that you're, you're here today. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you, staff. Want to offer some thank yous this morning. First, I want to, want to thank State Representative Jimmy Dixon of Calypso and State Representative John Bell of Rosewood for their help in securing some additional state funding for our schools. I appreciate their efforts, and I think they really went beyond the call to, to help us, and I wanted to publicly thank them. Also want to thank Commissioner Cromarty and, and Mr. Gurley and Mr. Daughtry for, y'all going to Southern Wayne High School and listening to the parents at Southern Wayne. 2001 was a long time ago, when some promises were made to the Southern Wayne community. And a lot of, it's been a long time, some of those promises, some people kind of feel like have not been kept, but we appreciate you going and listening and trying to work things out to, to help them. Also want to thank the, the school board. Last Tuesday, as some of you are probably aware, they voted to seek bids on a full-competition gym at Southern Wayne and a classroom wing. And again, hopefully with, with additional funding and with your help and finding some, some resources, when those bids come back, that, that can be fully funded. I want to thank our county manager, Mr. Honeycutt. I can be critical at times, but I, but I do appreciate him working with the superintendent and, and his work on the budget. I think there's some very, very needed funding for our schools, of supplement for our teachers, that I know is appreciated. And it's not enough, but it's a good start, as you said, Mr. Honeycutt, and I agree completely with that. I want to thank the full board. Five years ago, y'all made a, a decision to cut property taxes in Wayne County, and I think the five-cent tax decrease that you took at that time, I, I think was the highest percentage decrease of any county in, in North Carolina. And, but there was also some recognition at that time that at some point in time, you'd have to come back in and, and raise taxes to, to meet some needs. But again, for five years, we've enjoyed a, a tax decrease, and, and I appreciate the courage that you, you've shown in terms of looking at and increasing property taxes this time to take care of some things that are, that are needed. I also want to just end up by saying, again, we've got some, some, some young people in this county that are being left behind. Forty percent of our students are in low-performing schools, and, and that's not, we need to work on that. And again, we're making a start. We're, we're making some, some, some attempts to do some things, but there's a lot more work to be done. Again, I think it's a good start that, that y'all are getting into. So again, thank you for your efforts, and I praise that you, pray that you'll continue to, to work hard for our, our young people.
Thank you, Barry. Anyone else? Come on. I know, I used to stand down there before I came to commissioner.
Okay, so I'm Angela Hinton, and I actually live on Salem Church Road, 3495 Salem Church Road. Phone number's 919-222-5376. I try not to give you my husband's, but anyway. I was gonna just say, Steve's area, Lane Tree, the, the nice end, looks fabulous. It, it really does, it looks fabulous. And the reason I became involved with this whole road thing, what was I doing? Do you ever think that?
Oh, yeah.
What was I doing? What was I thinking? I lived in Lane Tree, actual resident in Lane Tree, Claybrook Drive, probably one of the worst areas for the road a long time ago, and then mom and dad moved on Salem Church Road, and I was right behind them. But anyway, we've had this petition, and Steve made it look easy, and, and you guys made it look easy. And I know it wasn't, I know it wasn't, but I'm telling you what, having a petition for the amount of people that live at that other end, and trying to manage people buying and selling, and the time lapse that we've gone from getting the petition and starting to get the signatures and, you know, rally, 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 rally about it and cheer, you know, that's my thing. It, it's a long time. I just want to ask that whenever you guys get ready to move, because I understand you've done like we all do, you spent your money on his project, and you might not have any for ours. I just want to ask that when it's time to consider another subdivision road project, that we're right up top, because we've tried to maintain the list of signatures, and believe it or not, I would have to ask Ms. Carol, but I believe we are right there at our 75%. So we've worked hard. We've got a lot of hard work to do, and, and just maintaining this thing is, is difficult. But if we can be considered when you guys are ready to move again first, so that we don't have to try to figure out when people are selling and moving and buying until you're ready, I, I would appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna close out with a public comment and move right on in to the committee. Ms. Raycock?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we have two recommendations of, this morning. We recommend Mr. Brent Heath to be appointed to Goldsboro Wayne Transportation Authority, and that is in the form of a motion.
Motion on the floor, is any discussion? Always the favorite place to raise your right hand. Thank you.
And secondly, we have Ms. Pam Sullivan-Silver appointed to the Wayne County ABC Board, and that's in the form of a motion.
Another motion on the floor, is any discussion on this one? Always the favorite place to raise your right hand.
That's all we have today.
All right, thank you, sir. We're right on time before our public hearing, receive public comments on the annual budget and capital improvement projects. And again, individual speaker only, four minutes each. So that is open, and did you have anything you want to say first before we-
I'll be glad to give you a, a quick summary now, or would you like me to do it during the manager's update? Mr. Chairman, whatever y'all feel like. I'm fine at the end, if you'd rather-
Okay, we'll wait till the end, then.
But just to let you know that, that we're, we don't have a-
But just to let you know that we don't have a finalized budget at this point to recommend to you, and it's still kind of a work in progress, especially the work that's being done at the state with the low wealth formula and trying to do some of that gap funding there. So we just met again on Wednesday and Thursday of last week. I believe we met Wednesday, six hours, and I think Thursday, we met about six hours as well. Appreciated the Board of Commissioners and also our staff and our finance department really looking at a really deep dive into our budget and our operations. And we did make some changes from those days that we were not ready to, we've not gone back through and made those changes yet since it was just Thursday of last week. But we are moving forward, and I'll talk about it a little bit more during the managers' comments.
Okay. Thank you. So to the public. Go on once, or twice. Okay, well, thank you then. We'll close it on out. We'll hear more from county manager later. Okay, we've already talked about the consent agenda in the opening session. There's any additional discussion about the consent agenda? Is there a motion to accept it? Okay, we've got a motion on the floors, any discussion? All is in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving right on in to new business, motion to adopt a resolution, question of county Wayne approving and adopting five interlocal agreements.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Local governments were directed in January to develop new flood damage prevention ordinances as part of the process for new flood maps that were becoming effective June 20th. The deadline may present a continuation, be a problem with the continuation of having access to flood insurance, all these jurisdictions. The county staff assisted with the preparation of these documents so that continuity existed between these different jurisdictions. And the town of Mount Olive, town of Seven Springs, the village of Walnut Creek, town of Pikeville, and the town of Fremont were included in the process. The town of Eureka does not participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, so they were not included. Because Wayne County performs the building inspections for those towns listed, and because the county acts as the floodplain administrator for all parts of unincorporated Wayne County, it has been requested that the county act as the floodplain administrators for the towns listed above. This request has been acted on by each of the towns in the form of an interlocal agreement that they have signed. They're attached to your agenda. Each agreement has been before its respective board and has been approved, is now before the Wayne County Board of Commissioners for your approval to make it official. And there's also a resolution there that needs to be adopted and signed.
Do you have any questions? I'll be glad to ask. Questions? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'd prefer to approve it, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion on the floor, any discussion? All is in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, Public Affairs Department.
This is Catch a Glimpse from Wayne County Public Affairs for May 2018. Habitat for Humanity held their Women's Build 2018, featuring a competition between Julie Beck from the Mount Olive Chamber of Commerce and Kaye Daniels from the Wayne County Chamber. Wilderness Nurse Michelle Hill completed a 10-week employee weight loss campaign with over 57 inches lost in the county. May was Mental Health Awareness Month. Wayne TV covered Anxiety 101 with Dr. Steve Peters, as well as a program on autism awareness. Public Affairs launched a campaign for Hurricane Matthew Relief Buddy, including TV promos, social media posts, and billboard coverage. Wayne UNC cut the ribbon on their state-of-the-art surgical center. This facility is one of many improvements being made for healthcare in our county. Our monthly wellness check with Michelle Hill also featured heart disease and what you need to know surrounding heart trouble. Airman Collier joined us for our monthly From the Flightline series, where we highlight the men and women serving at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. The Wayne County Chamber hosted their annual healthcare hot topic lunch and discussed the biggest topics in healthcare for Wayne County. Mark Holbrook joined us throughout May to talk about Operation Unite Goldsboro and their mini summer programs going on right here in Wayne County for youth to take place in while school is out. Our Chairman's Corner series was on the road in May on location at the Wayne UNC Surgery Center grand opening. NASCAR driver Bubba Wallace toured Seymour Johnson and got a hands-on look at the mission of the fourth fighter wing. Wallace is the driver of the number 43 Air Force race car. The 916 Air Refueling Wing had their change of command as Colonel Craig McPike assumed command of the wing on May 18. The Wayne County Public Library held an interesting program on Andy Griffith and his ties to Wayne County. This program can be seen online and on Wayne TV. The streets of Mount Olive were packed for the Pickle Festival 2018 in May. Over 40,000 visitors got a dose of Wayne County hospitality. The Wayne Women's Expo took over the Maxwell Center in May and was packed out with vendors. The United Way stopped by to promote their Letter Carrier Food Drive. Food was collected and distributed to local organizations to help those in need. The University of Mount Olive stopped in for an update on their evening college and how you can get your degree. Our first episode of A Day in the Life of was produced for National EMS Week. Wayne TV did a ride-along with an EMS crew to see what their day is like helping people here in Wayne County. That's a glimpse of Wayne County for May 2018. We'll see you next month.
Okay, thank you. County managers' comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Gurley. We are excited to have you back and really want to give just a quick overview of where we're at on the budget right now. As the board's aware, when we went and had our budget workshops last week, not a lot of changes in the operations. If the board remembers, probably three weeks earlier, we had our CIP discussion, and I think the CIP discussion went very, very well. We made a little bit over a million dollars worth of cuts from the CIP in meeting with the board at that time, kind of adjusted some of our projects. But we did make some changes to our operations. We looked at, especially the last couple of days, we looked at the ambulances. I think we're looking at two new ambulances, one for Wayne debt and one for EMS, and they're about $160,000 apiece. I think right now, we're going back and look at some remounts instead of just brand-new ambulances at this time. But again, the big issue I think that we're dealing with is the state budget right now. And as Mr. Merrill said, we want to thank Representative Dixon and Representative Bell for the work that they've done on the low wealth funding. We had an $800,000 gap that we were trying to fill, and we were going to do that with county dollars. However, once the budget is approved, that is a gap we may not have to fill. So that may be something we can look at cutting out of our budget. And as the board is aware, we looked at, recommended a 2.655 cent tax increase. Part of that was to look at our school funding, the low wealth issues. We are looking at adding a half a percent increase to the teacher supplement, which is a $500,000 cost. So with the changes at the state, and I think there's some additional funding with SROs that may occur at the state level, we don't have to approve the budget today, so we can go back and make sure when we do approve, we're actually approving the final figures that we have from the state. One of the things we did look at this year, we wanted to keep our fund balance transfers as low as possible. That was part of the reason for looking at a tax increase as well. In looking at our employees, we looked at a 1% cost of living increase for all employees, but also we had set aside a 1% for merit. So we're looking at our employees as well. We also looked at some fee changes within our budget. I think one of the biggest ones we looked at was on our sewer system, where we looked at about an 8% increase for the Genoa Sewer System. And I think that increase has not happened in the past 10 years. It's been a while since there's been a sewer rate increase. But again, right now, there's a lot of moving pieces to the budget since our last workshop in the state. We would recommend that we have a workshop with the board, hopefully in the next week, week and a half, to kind of finalize where we're at and make a final recommendation to the board on a budget ordinance and a tax rate.
Questions?
Y'all, allow me just a few minutes?
Sure.
Trying to play a little catch-up.
Yes, sir.
Did I understand you say right now, you're looking at 2.65?
Well, that was before the $800,000, you know, and our understanding is in Senate Bill 99, the budget bill, that there's a provision in there that will take care of that low wealth issue for Wayne County.
As I've talked with the chairman, and he's kind of brought me up to speed a little bit, I'm still not convinced we need a tax increase, but I don't know all the moving parts, as you described. He shared some with me, and I'm not being critical of what you're doing so far. I'm not saying we won't do one and a half cent, but I'm still not convinced. I want to do some more looking and checking to satisfy my own peace of mind. Simply put, on the surface, a 1.5% increase is going to cause-
$15 per $100,000.
$200,000 house, $30.
Right.
Doesn't sound like much, but when you talk about a senior citizen on a fixed income, it could result in not getting medicine one month. And we start talking about $30,000, over $30 on $200,000 property, that's a lot of combines a lot of farmers have, and the farmers haven't had a lot of good years in the past. I hope this year's a better year, there's never no promise, you know? So how many combines at $200,000 out there, or cab over tractors and trucks and grain bins and bulk born? So I've just got a passion in my heart for the farmers as, you know, they're a primary economic engine, you know? And so that's a consideration I'd like for everybody, just look, just look hard and make sure if we have to do something, we're doing it for the right reason. Another thing, for the past two or three years, we were talking about bridge in a couple of fiscal years. $2 million come off in debt in two years, back to back. Can you tell me what year's that-
We're in year two of that, so our debt service, you know, when we did the bonds, there was a $2 million increase last year and a $2 million this year. That bridge will leave next year, so our debt service should be about flat.
But this is our last crucial year.
Yes, sir, on debt service.
Another consideration that I'd like for discussion, if we don't and decide not to go with a tax increase, discussion on a course in sales tax for next year's primary. Of course, in, I understand, remember right from Allison, maybe 2.4, 2.6 million dollars? So, you know, that way with a sales tax, you know, it distributes fairly to everybody to help with what our shortfalls are. So that's a consideration. Now, this is another selfish request from me.
Yes, sir.
Back whenever I was department head, I don't know, I had Janice Allison, I had six, seven, eight budget program areas I was responsible for. And selfishly for me, at every budget season, whenever I submitted that budget, I would give them a different sheet. And it wasn't about salaries and benefits, but when it comes to operational costs, you know, 212, 352, whatever, what I was trying to demonstrate to the budget team, to save me a lot of headaches, save them a lot of headaches, save a lot of time, was that in 212 or whatever the number was line item, it was lower this year. It was a decrease because we didn't go to a conference. The national conferences are here, we didn't go. We showed a decrease. But also, in the next line item, we showed an increase because, you know, we needed maintenance repair equipment. We knew we were going to need 10 extra bulbs for 10 LCD projectors, and it was 10,000 extra dollars. So we just tried to demonstrate that to lessen the burden and pain on all of us, you know, make things more simple and more transparent. So my selfish request today is, if you would ask each department head to do that for me and this whole entire board, so when we have our next workshop, we can get a quick glimpse of it, at least I'd like to see it. Because I know y'all sit through two grueling days of work sessions, and y'all may not need it, but I just think it's something you can start that'll ease the pain on everybody. Just feel that way. And I agree with Barry Merrill's comments on Representative Dixon, Representative Bell, and Representative Bell did a whole, whole, whole lot of work unraveling this project. And the low wealth formula and funding for the schools, when you first look at it, it looks complicated, sounds complicated, convoluted as it can be, but when you went in there, as John Bell did, and unraveled it with some DPI folks, it's really simple, you know? It's really, really simple. And I'm forever grateful to him and Representative Dixon, but it's also another person, I'd like to add a name to, Representative Lynda Johnson. I mean, she worked hard and vigorously and helped us regain that. And the more important part is, we've recouped it for the years to come. So that's, you know, hats off to them. Barry, I appreciate you acknowledging that, and that's very important to let everyone know. I think for the time, that's kind of coverage to, maybe I can kind of dive down into this and look a little deeper, but I appreciate everybody's hard work y'all did. And believe it or not, I miss being here last Wednesday and Thursday, I really did. I mean, this is my passion, Wayne County's my heart, so thank y'all.
While we're going into Commissioner's comments, you already had to weigh in on anything else.
Well, I just wanted to, do we want to go ahead and set that workshop date now?
Say, why not?
So that way, if we can set the date and time, then that'll give us a, our next board meeting is on the 19th. Did not know if you wanted to do it on the 19th. We can do it before, you know, at this point, we can pass a budget anytime between now and July 1, or excuse me, June 30th.
So they passed the bill in the Senate and House last Friday?
Yeah.
Which was, so they got 10 days before it become law, unless the governor signs-
15 is the magical day.
15, that's what I'm looking at. I think that's about right.
I'm okay with the 19th.
19.
You know, we're going to be here anyway.
We can just-
I know what's in the bill, but I want it to be final.
It will be a more of a meeting workshop, and we can just do it on the 19th.
Okay.
Would that be after our meeting? Or during our meeting?
We could do it during.
Add it into it.
Or we could do it, if we needed a break, you know, we could then do it afterwards, but-
I'm just saying, if there, you anticipate a lot of other things been on the agenda other than that?
Right.
I don't think that there's anything complicated in there. The other part is, that would be the day that you typically would vote on the budgets. I think have the work sessions part of it, go into your work session and then vote afterwards because you're not going to meet on the, on the 1st. But you have to have it done before the 1st anyway.
I say we just incorporate it around the 19th meeting.
We can do that.
Everybody good with that? Okay, that's what we'll do.
Yes, sir. And that's all I have.
Did you have anything else as you were rolling?
Since we got a floor, it's great to be back. Y'all don't know how great it is to be back. Sometimes you sit up here thinking you're a glutton for punishment, but you know what? It's sweet to be here. Thank you, everybody, for all the cards and prayers and thoughts and acts of kindness from me and my family. Y'all never know how much it means to receive. And as Commissioner Daughtry asked me, I have phone privileges back. I said, "Yeah, I got reinstated phone privileges about two or three days ago," so I'm good there, but I'm a blessed man, and I know God's got a plan, and I'm part of it, and I move forward every day with him and his hand in hand, so thank y'all.
Ms. Raycott?
Yes, sir. Ain't been all that busy. I mean, I have been, but I did attend the employee picnic, and Plan B worked real well. It was planned to be outside, and the first church was gracious enough to let us use- It was planned to be outside, and the First Church was gracious enough to let us use their facility. And as it worked out, we probably would have been all right outside. But Plan B was our condition and Plan A was not. So it worked out, it worked out well. And I'd like to thank the, all the staff, everyone was involved in putting that on because, you know, we probably don't say thank you to our employees enough, and I think we had a good turnout. And the ones that really made it happen, I want to thank y'all. And also, a couple of things that Commissioner Gurley mentioned, you know, we've got to look at this tax increase with a real hard. I've, I don't know about the rest of it, but I've had several calls on the 2.65, and you know, now today we've mentioned a 1.5, and that is quite an improvement. But our, our farming community is concerned about a tax increase at all. I've talked to several and had several phone calls. And, you know, they're kind of holding us to, and I don't remember exactly what the exact wording was when we, when we took on the Maxwell Center. But they were basically told that, you know, it could be done without a tax increase. And I know that, you know, we're looking at a tax increase, and it really doesn't pertain to the Maxwell Center. But a tax increase is a tax increase. And I know, you know, basically, you know, the issue was the low wealth formula, and we think, you know, we're pretty sure that that's worked out. But they still, farming is the number one source of income in Wayne County, and it's going to, it's going to impact them in a big way. So we've got to look at this real close, to look at the long range. At some, we may have to look back at some of these departments and sharpen the pencil a little bit more. And also, us as commissioners, some of the projects that maybe we wanted to see happen, maybe they're going to be slid back for a little while. But we, you know, that's what we're going to have to talk about on the 19th. But just give us a real consideration on this tax increase. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I did attend one committee meeting, the wages board last Thursday. And I see my champion of the board here, Ms. Shirley Edwards. I think she came to see if I was going to make my report. But wages, believe me, is one of the pride and joys of Wayne County. I think we are considered one of the best in this state, if not in the country. We, they trust us to handle funds from other counties, you know, and that's very unusual. They're getting ready to go on a work session out in Wilmington, I think. I'm not going to be able to go for doctor's appointment, so I hope you all have a good time while you're down there and learn a lot and bring back some good reports. Thank you. Oh, and I just want to make one comment about the tax increase. Now, you can't have it both ways. You can't spend money and buy things. Somebody got to pay for it if you do that. And we've been doing a lot of spending up here on this board. And we, we cut taxes, which was good. But at the time that we cut taxes, I mentioned that we fall under that low wealth thing, and if you cut it too low, it's going to make the state not give you your money. And what happened? It happened just exactly like I said, you know? So you can't just cut taxes, just cut taxes and keep spending and think you can, you can cut yourself out of whatever you're trying to do. Now, there's nobody up here hate taxes any more than I do. But I know if you spend money, you got to get it from someplace to pay for what you spend. So I don't quite get it where you guys are coming from. You know, you, you did all those cuts, and you never checked to see what the state was going to do about the low wealth thing. Then I put a thing on the board, on the floor the other day about cutting the departments a little bit, and you didn't even approve that. So I don't know where you're going. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Had a library board meeting, which again, Ms. Shirley Edwards is our chairman of that board. And the board of commissioners and our budget for the library did step up to the plate as far as library safety is concerned. Also had a social services meeting, base community council meeting, and of course, two days of budget. So it's been very busy. I wanted to take just a second to, in agreement with the, with the tax increase, but at the same time, I think Commissioner Bell's hit it on the head. At some point, even back in 2012, when we gave a tax decrease, we never said that there wouldn't come a point in the future when we may have to go back on a tax increase or even go back to what it was pre-2012. So I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it. I think we need to really look at it real closely. The other thing I want to address is that if you remember three or four years ago, I want to address the lady that came up in our public comment talking about the firearms discharge in Wayne County. If you remember, we addressed this supposedly about three, four years ago, and actually, in my opinion, put a Band-Aid on it, because back then, Sheriff Wonders, when he was living, said that a person could discharge a firearm on their property and nobody could stop them, even if it's a mobile home park. But that person that fires that weapon is responsible if that, if that projectile goes onto somebody else's property and damages their property. Well, how are you going to prove that? You might as well not have it. I've got, I've gotten several calls from residents, that there was a previous commissioner sat on this board that a few years ago had the same problem in his backyard. His wife started hitting bullies, ricocheting around the trees. What I'm saying is, is that I would like for this board sometime this year to take a look at our firearms discharge ordinance in Wayne County. I'm not saying that we need to shut down the hunters and what their rights are, but we need to take a look at what our ordinances are in certain areas of the county as reference to discharge of firearms. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, with that. I find this morning that I could probably just say amen and not say anything else, but that's probably not my style. I first want to give recognition to Mr. Bell and Mr. Mayo. I probably talk to them as much as I talk to anyone. Sometimes Mr. Mayo and I just talk about religion a little bit and being grandfathers. And I'm going to stick to that part for a moment. I received a call, I don't get a lot of calls, but when I do get them, I pay real close attention to them. I got a call from another grandfather like myself, who has some young children in Wayne County. And it really, I mean, sometimes you got to make an example to really bring it home. And this grandfather said something to the effect, are we going to allow our children to grow up and go to substandard schools? And I listened very attentively to that, because he and I have grandchildren that are in the same general age bracket. I started a little bit late, and I don't know what his excuse was. He might want to stay up and tell us a minute. But that got my attention. And although I have, without any reservation, been an advocate for the school side of the business, and proudly I say that, but talking about children growing up in substandard schools and not having the same opportunity as everybody else really got my attention. And I say all that we are doing right this minute is not enough. And then I had a colleague or so that started talking about a long and general conversation about doing some supplements for the teachers to make them feel appreciated and let them know that we didn't want them to leave us and go to Johnston County and Wake County and Lenore County and Wilson County and everywhere else they could go because they did not feel appreciated, and they also have to buy milk and bread. And that also played. Someone said a few minutes ago that 40% of our schools in the county are low performing. I ventured to say if I asked Ms. Edwards to come up and make a half-hour speech, she could tell you how 40% of our population lives in poverty. Am I close to being correct? There's a relationship here. If you live in poverty and that whole group of people go to a certain schools, you can't avoid it. You can't avoid it. I did a small calculation, and I don't need to say anything about taxes because it's been talked about enough, and I believe the point has been made. But I deal with a little home repair, house repair, rental business. And I believe, if I'm not incorrect, the 1.5 or something, I believe I would have to pay another $1,980 in taxes, I think.
That's wrong. Wouldn't mean 1,900, it'd be $19.
No, no, out of, no, not one house, out of a $12,000 bill that I already have, if I think about the math correct, if I added 1.65 to the $12,000 I already sent.
You own more houses than I thought.
I'm just making, because we're talking about the totality of what your assets may be to cause you to have to go to your bottom line. And I do appreciate, when I see all the assets that people have in various places, I know they have to pay taxes on them, but it's going to affect all of us. And those that have a little bit more must bite the bullet and give a little bit more, because God has blessed us with a little bit more or an opportunity to have just a little bit more. I'm just saying be benevolent as we weigh what we do. That's not to pass judgment on anyone's concept of what we do. I'm just sharing with you how I feel about it. One thing lastly about guns, I don't think there's any family in North Carolina that grew up with guns any more than my family did. Compton County, we really believed in them. Had them around us when we were little children, way smaller than we probably should have. But I came to Wayne County '84, '85 with a two-year-old son, and there was no place to safely throw out shooting. And that's not what we do anymore, because it's a danger to our neighbors. If the bullet goes up, it's got to fall someplace. And no one enjoyed the Fourth of July any more than we did. But we've got to be considerate of our neighbors when it comes to our families. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr.?
Mr. Dawes? I'm still figuring.
I might have made a mistake, but I thought I was right.
$19.80, because you really don't want to go back.
That's rounded off $2. Person that has $150,000 house, you correct me if I'm wrong when I'm there figuring that out, $150,000 valued house, tax value, a 1.5 cent tax increase amounts to $22.50 per I understand the difficulty of raising taxes. But this commissioner, this commissioner is proud of what this board has done over the last five years. It's really been remarkable. And we did that with a tremendous tax decrease that we put in effect first year we were in office. And how did we come up with that figure that we reduced the taxes by? It was one of those numbers. The point is that over the last five years, we've been able to maximize our dollars and I think do an exceptional job of moving our county forward. This budget does in fact have what has been overlooked for years, and that is a half, half percent increase to supplements for teachers. And you say, well, everybody needs to have a raise. Let me talk about teachers for a minute. Johnston County is at 11%, I believe.
They're tiers based on tenure.
Okay.
But 11 is a fair statement.
11 is a fair statement. When you compare, my point is if you compare with the teacher pool in our area, if you were a teacher and you're looking for a job in our area, we are competing against counties like Johnston County, Wilson County, Sampson County. I believe Sampson County even is at 9 cents. So if you compare around us, and you were a teacher, and you can say, well, I can work in Wayne County, and I can get 6%, supplement, or I can go across the line over here to Johnston County, and I can get 11. That's, that's a big difference. It has not been addressed for so many years, and it has to be addressed if we are going to compete. Now, I want you to look at it a different way. When it comes down to a teacher and you are, and you're competing, and you put an application in at Johnston County, Sampson County, Wilson County, Wayne County, the cream of the crop is going to go where those higher dollars are. So we're going to, again, be non-competitive. We have to, we are going to have to address this. That's a half a million dollars just right off the bat. When you turn around and see that our DSS has suffered for years under funding, that is a half a million dollars this year we're going to be hit with. When you turn around and look at a number of issues, it's not just the schools. There are a lot of other issues that are out there. Now, can we get by without a tax increase? Absolutely. Is it easier just not to have a tax increase? Absolutely. Who wants to vote for a tax increase? But what you're going to end up doing is taking more money out of your savings account is all you're going to do. At some point, somebody's going to be sitting in this chair and is going to have to make that decision in order to increase taxes. I think it is more reasonable for me to look at it from a aspect of what am I leaving for the legacy going forward? Let's maybe bite the bullet a little bit now, take a little bit less out of savings account, so there'll be more going forward. I'm not totally for or against a tax increase, but I'm open-minded and think we all need to look at the pros and cons of a small tax increase. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
What else can I say that these guys haven't already said about this? We will be looking closely. Myself and the county manager are making arrangements to meet with Representative Bell to get more clarity about what is in the bill. So we can make that decision as to what we need to do going forward. As he's saying, there's more to it than just schools. You know, the cost of operations continue to rise. You get health costs that have risen dramatically in the last few years. You got to give your staff, they deserve raises from time to time, or they're going to go somewhere else. And the infrastructure that we had was in such poor shape, we have had to put considerable dollars into that, and we still got much more to do. So having said all of that, we, we'll just take a look at it, and then we'll talk about it on the 19th. And hopefully, we'll have some information from Representative Bell before we come back for that date. On the gun safety thing, you know, I was raised, you know, I was out hunting when I was 10 years old. But it was a different day, and we didn't have the density of population that we do now. And I was taught gun safety at a very early age, and I knew better than them in shooting in the neighborhood. People do that kind of stuff. I hear it all the time where I live. So I'm, I'm not against taking another look at that, because I hear it all the time in my neighborhood. But anyway, that's all I've got today. I was out a fair amount. I had planned on a vacation, but God didn't want me to go, apparently, because everything that could go wrong went wrong, so I ended up staying in Wayne County and didn't go anywhere. But at least my wife is on vacation this week, which maybe I'm going to vacation, I better watch out. I do know that we need to finish, get back in the closed session. We have some other things to discuss for the same reason. Okay.
One more quick thing if you allow me. I respect for listening, each one of y'all and respect your opinions just like y'all respect mine. As I want to make myself crystal clear on not being critical on what you and the budget team and, and this board has done, I think y'all have done an outstanding job and I understand those two days were grueling and it was, but it was productive, I understand. But, but there's one thing we're still, we're still trying to avoid here and not talk about is the possibility of potential court since sales tax.
I'm not against that.
Just one second. 2.4, 2.6 million dollars is a lot of money. And like I say, it kind of fairly distributes the burden of taxes to everyone. And, you know, I, I know the law says you can't specifically say it's for this or that or nothing. But anyway, just something to think about. I know Commissioner Dawes is going to comment. And I, but, but I will give him credit. He is very good at sales tax referendums. He's very good at it. Because I, I know from experience how he's led the charge for it. So it's just depending on Commissioner Dawes, if he'll lead the charge for us in a positive way or a negative way. So just kidding there. But anyway, your turn.
Let me commend you. I totally agree. That is the fairest tax where we spread it across the board. And I'm sitting there one day in March, just started budget discussions and said, listen, we really need to consider getting this thing on the ballot. I did some research and as it turns out, in just about every instance where the, it is put on the ballot in the November elections, it is definitely turned down. So you want to put it on the primaries. So I immediately called Dane and I said, Dane, can we get this on the ballot in this primary? He said, no, I'm sorry, it's too late. So I said, well, when is the next time we could get it on the ballot? Guess what? We can't put it on the ballot next year.
2020.
2020 primary is the earliest we can get it on there. But I look forward to working with you and building support within our community to actually get that passed here in Wayne County because it is the fairest tax and doesn't put that burden on the property tax owners. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more comments before I make, ask, or motion to go in closed session? Okay. Yep. Motion to go in closed session. Raise your hand.